I hereby call to order this special meeting and committee of the whole meeting. It is Monday, October 18th, 2021, and the time is 8:01. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Amy Palin.
Here.
John Caesaretti.
Here.
Ann Hart.
Here.
Bonnie Kim.
Frank Panzika.
Here.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes. Erin Stone.
Here.
I seek a motion to approve the September 20th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting minutes.
I move to approve the... Sorry, so moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minute? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
John Caesaretti.
Yes.
Ann Hart.
Yes.
Bonnie Kim.
Yes.
Frank Panzika.
Yes.
Erin Stone.
Yes.
Amy Palin.
Yes.
Great, motion carries. We'll begin with Facility Development Committee, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Panzika.
Hey, we have a light agenda today, so I'll turn it over to Cory and get a little bit of an update on 2022.
Since the September meeting, the architects and engineer team have been working hard on the design work for all three projects for next summer. And while we move through there, we did hit a design milestone for the Harper project, which allowed Nicholas and Associates to gather some feedback. And so Joe will kind of provide us an update where we're at. Go ahead, Joe.
Morning, everyone.
Morning, Joe.
Thanks, Cory. So with regards to Harper, we are at 60% construction documents. This is sort of our third checkpoint with regards to Harper. We do have one more forthcoming prior to going out to bid. That'll be the 85% CD budget assessment, so that should be complete the end of this week or early next week. And if all looks good, we'll be prepared to go out to bid on Harper right around November 4th, with an anticipated board bid opening just before Thanksgiving. So that's the Harper timeline. With regards to the budget, right now, we're tracking, now this is based on 60% CDs, at about 3.5 hard cost of construction. That's about $280,000 higher than the original baseline back in June that was presented to you. So that's a couple of reasons. As the design progresses, it'll spend some additional scope. Probably the most significant one is with regards to existing louver replacement work. This is just a product that while we're there, to do it as cost efficiently as possible, that would be the time to change out any existing louvers to achieve consistency throughout the exterior of the building. There is some masonry work involved with that as well. And then just current market conditions. This is why we have multiple rounds of budgeting. We don't want any bid day surprises. If the market is trending high, which as we all know it is, we want to know... We want to confirm that, and then we want to know how much of an impact we anticipate. So overall, I'm happy with where we're at. Given that we are at 60%, we do have some conservativeness still left in the budget. So contractors, I'm a big advocate in bringing the contractors that are ultimately going to bid the work and possibly do the work into the budget process, so we get that real hard feedback, actual feedback throughout the process. So I expect a little bit of that to come out for the next round. But overall, I'm happy with where we're at. We're going out at a good time for bidding. And I expect a lot of competitiveness as well. Before I move off of Harper into a quick update on Mackenzie and Ramona, any specific questions with regards to Harper? Now, this is the three components, so this is the boilerwork, bathrooms, and also the roof replacement. So all three will be bid in one bid issuance.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, that was a good summary. Why don't you move on to Mackenzie then?
Then Mackenzie and Ramona, similar timelines. Our out to bid for Mackenzie right now is tentatively January 4th, right after the new year, with an anticipated bid opening end of January. And then Ramona will be the following week, so January 11th is our out to bid. And that will also bid by the end of January. So both of those, from a budget assessment standpoint, it's early on in the design phase. So we still have yet to get into construction document budgeting. But again, that will have two or three looks between now and going out to bid the end of the year, just to see where those are tracking as well.
Any questions on that?
John?
Yeah, I had a question. So Joe, are you seeing inflated numbers coming in on your other projects, given the current environment? Do you think we should anticipate larger costs than we already do?
So we have, this is early on in the new bid season, I guess if you want to call it that. So we'll probably be putting anywhere from 20 to 30 projects out to bid from now till February. So we have had one significant bid opening for Niles Township Special Ed, Malloy Education Center. That was a large project that came in under budget. Since then, we just established the final control estimate for a new administration center for Wheeling District 21. And we were out to bid last week, but that, we saw an increase from our 85% CD budget assessment to 95%. And that was purely just based on contractor feedback, which from that point, it trickles down through suppliers and subcontractors. So we did see a little bit of an uptick recently. Now, that bid opening is October 29th. So we're very interested to see where those numbers come in. Now, we're still relatively early in the big bidding season, so I'm not too concerned. But again, this next round, by the end of this week, early next week, I'll know exactly where we anticipate being just before Thanksgiving. Lead times are another thing that we're keeping a close eye on, especially with mechanical equipment. Harper, we're okay. Mackenzie, we may want to look at just securing and at least getting a material order in the queue early, knowing that we're hearing much of the same time, sort of lead time unknowns for '22, like we just experienced in '21. Everything went well last year or this year. But we understand that it's going to be best case similar to what we just experienced. So we want to get orders placed ASAP.
I had some quick follow-ups to that. Usually when we do get to the point of saying, yes, the contracts are locked in, so from a bidder standpoint, if inflation hits after that, they've committed to us a price, so pick price.
Correct. So when they submit a bid, they're holding pricing for the life of the project, so for the entire construction base.
And lead times seemed to work well last year, so definitely stay on top of that. And if we need to approve a capital purchase, you know, a month early in order to give it a little time to make sure that your schedules work out, make sure you keep us up to date on that.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
And then finally, I'm one of the privileged people to have lived through the inflation in the eighties. And one of the things you learn from there is early is better than late. So are there any projects, and I guess this is much for Cory as anybody else, that were like on the fence for the next year that would make sense to at least consider accelerating? So that's a Cory question. Hard to have eye contact, so.
Yeah, no. There's certainly, you know, there's definitely projects in the pipeline. I think one of the things from our perspective is, you know, the projects generally that we have, and we'll discuss this more throughout the rest of this fiscal year, but most of the projects out there are larger in nature, and so they do require larger lead times. But then also, the one thing that we kind of have to keep in consideration is really District 39 is, how many buildings can we get into each summer and still meet our summer programming needs with District 39 and with the Park District? So we're doing, you know, three larger projects in the grand scheme of what we might do. That's probably going to three different schools, that's probably about it that we're able to tackle for one summer. I think from my perspective, the next question is, and as we work through this year, is what do we... What items do we place in the summer of '23, and how many? That's, I guess, given that it's October now, I think that's probably the next realistic discussion point as far as projects.
It makes sense from the physical thing of the number of buildings impacted, because that impacts education. But if there is any, you know, on the fence or a year and a half out project in the three buildings we are touching, if you could just, you know, take one more look at it, because we haven't had the privilege of inflation being in conversations for at least 20 years. But like I said, those of us that are a little bit older remember when it made a big difference. If, you know, waiting one year, especially when our revenues are fixed. So due diligence, if there's nothing, there's nothing. If it's too artificial, it's too artificial, but, you know, don't bring up something for discussion if there's a chance that it might make sense. All right, thank you. Anybody have any other comments or questions? All right, well, thank you for that update, and we're looking forward still to donuts, so one of these days, don't forget to show up. Anything else? Okay, I'll hand it back to...
Okay, great, thank you, and thanks to you all for being here with us for that discussion. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Caesaretti for school finance.
Right, thank you, President.
Good morning, everyone.
Thank you all.
Bye. We're going to talk about tax levy and the supplemental debt service levy, and I'm going to turn it over to Cory, we'll talk about that.
All right, thank you. All right, so the 2021 tax levy, included in your package should be some background info, some sheets that I typically use as reference points during the preparation process. Since we have a couple of new board members, I thought it might be useful to kind of go through those. And then I'll touch on some of the larger projects that are underway in the community before we go into the actual presentation. So the first page was just a... A history of CPI over the last 21 years. I think, you know, the bolded line is the 1.4% that's applicable to the tax levy that I'll talk about this morning. And as Frank alluded to, through nine months of '21, we're at 5.3% CPI inflation. And if you, you know, if everything was even, that would mean a little over 7% for the year. Just for reference, the PTEL or the Property Tax Limitation Law does cap our percent increase at 5%. So once you go over 5, from a purely a CPI standpoint here, capped at 5%. But that is certainly an item to keep an eye on as we look the last three months. Typically, November, December kind of wind down and are usually flat, or sometimes take a small step back. But I think what we've seen so far this year is quite a bit out of the normal compared to the last 20 years. The next page has a lot of historical information as it relates to new growth and the total EAV of the district. It also has a calculation on the far right that shows the percent change in existing EAV. So for the 2020 tax year that had finalized this past summer, we had 12.1 in new growth, and that brings our 10-year average down to just over $14 million. I think it's worth noting that 2020 was not a reassessment year, and the negative 0.5% is about as level as you're going to get. I would anticipate 2021's not a reassessment year either. I would anticipate either flat or maybe slightly, slight decrease. In our estimated calculation, we've held it flat, just because it would be nearly impossible to estimate what what kind of decrease there might be from appeals of assessed value. And it's a little more of a conservative approach. I think the thing to keep an eye on is the following tax year when we have a reassessment and see how Cook County takes into account everything that's occurred over the last year and a half. The next page in there is the estimated extension. So the reason I wanted to include this document in there is, you'll see it in our board meeting packet next week, and then it'll probably be included the following month. One of the requirements is that we actually go through the process and estimate in detail what we believe the tax extension to be, not just what we're going to request from Cook County. So you have four years of actual data, and then you see on the far right the estimated extension. And then the following page is similar, it's got four years of actual data, and then an estimated extension. This is the actual formula that drives the limiting rate or the tax rate that gets applied to new growth. So this particular sheet is really done, or at least I do it, to identify that rate and try and come up with a value of for new growth in any one given year. So those are just some of the pieces that I use in putting together the tax levy estimate and their levy request. So last year, we had reached out to the village and talked about some of the larger projects, and they had responded with some detailed info on four projects. When I reached out again this year, nothing had changed as far as large scale projects. So just as a reminder, the first project is at 1010 Central, the Masonic Temple, that's just a stone's throw away from Central School. They're taking something that was tax exempt, converting that into a taxable multifamily property. The estimate was that there would be 14 units. When I looked up on the Cook County website, they did have for 2021 tax year, what I perceive to be a relatively small amount of assessed value. I believe that's probably the first step in taking something from exempt to taxable, and they've got it listed under one pin. I assume as they finish the projects and people buy those units, that they will create individual pins. And so I think we'll see a little bit of a benefit from that during this upcoming tax year. Then with the following year, I would anticipate even more realized value. Then at 335 Ridge Road, that's near the intersection of Ridge and Walmatt, there's a 60-unit memory care facility, and that is a for-profit company, so it will be taxable, which in the medical realm, there are many facilities throughout the state that are tax exempt, so that is nice. The owner of the property, I communicate to the village, they anticipate the value of that property to double from its prior use as a shopping center. So that will be a nice addition once that comes online. Third project is the American Legion Building at 1925 Walmatt Avenue. They expect that project to be complete sometime in 2021. The building would demolish and replaced with 16 affordable housing units. And then the last project is at 1210 Central, which is just west, or on the west side of downtown. And construction is anticipated to start during 2021, although I haven't driven by there to see if that has actually occurred. But when I did look up to see where they are projecting the market value to be, say, in year two and in year 10 of that particular property's life after construction compared to what it is now, they were estimating about, that ultimately could be worth about an extra $400,000 to $500,000 in taxes. So that would be worth a couple hundred thousand. The District 39 portion alone would be worth a couple hundred thousand dollars a year once it gets finalized and is added to the tax bills. So with that said, any questions about that? Or if not, I will jump into the levy presentation.
Right. Yeah, I had a quick question, and it probably comes up in the levy discussion, but if there's a cap of 5% duty, we talked about inflation and then a number to make sure that we cover the new construction.
Yep.
If there's a cap of 5%, and let's say inflation was 5%, does that mean that effectively for that year, we don't get to recover any of the new construction?
No, we would still, as long as our levy is above the cap relates to the CPI amount only, we would still get to capture any new growth that comes our way this year. So it would be 5% plus, you know, however much new growth comes online next year.
All right, thank you.
Glad you asked that question. So I love what you did, yeah, but it's super complicated, which it has to be, because it's just complicated. So I encourage all the board members to maybe separately with Cory and Carrie to go through it, because it's really worth it to understand PTEL and this process. Highly regulated, but I think Cory hit the high note, which is we're limited by PTEL, but there is good new construction, which should help us also. So, yeah, thank you, Cory, and it's like you're going to go through the tax levy.
Yep, the presentation. All right. So just want to review the calendar related to our tax levy. So today, we'll go through the background materials and review the extension. I'll do this presentation of the estimated levy next Monday night at the board meeting. One of the things that District 39 does that is completely optional, given that CPI is only 1.4% in our request, our levy request will be, is targeted to be at 3.6%, is anything below 5% does not require a public hearing. If you go over 5% in your request, then you're required to go to a public hearing and publish notice. However, District 39 has a long practice of going through, going through the process of publishing that hearing notice in the paper, and then holding that hearing before the beginning of the board meeting in which they would approve the levy. So November 4th would be the date we would target to publish that notice. Then November 15th board meeting would be the scheduled public hearing and adoption of the 2021 levy. And then the last Tuesday of the calendar year is when you have to have your levy filed by Cook County. So we would have that all taken care of well before December 28th. A little background info, as it relates to District 39, local property taxes represent over 84% of our total revenue. So this is what drives the revenue side for our financial health. The calculation of the levy amount is subject to the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law of PTEL, commonly referred to as the tax caps. PTEL limits our operating fund levy, increase in the prior year's CPI plus the addition of new property growth. And then districts, when you're capturing that CPI and new growth, the way that the law is written, you capture it in the year that you're able to, and if you don't, you lose it forever. I guess the one way around that, I guess if a district ever did lose it, is they can always, you know, seek an operating rate referendum. But as we all know, that is quite difficult. So most districts that I'm aware of, nearly all of them, try to capture CPI and new construction every year, just because of how difficult it is to go back and get it back in. Levy considerations, there are a few key components. EAV. EAV is the equalized assessed value of properties in the district as determined by the local and county assessors. The CPI is always a key number, and that's determined at the federal level, the annual inflation amount. We usually have that number for any given, for a future year by the second week in January. And then new property growth. So on top of that annual inflation number, the new property growth is incredibly valuable to every district, but especially here. So we always keep a really close eye on what new growth is going on, and hence the reason that we reach out to the village and find out our projects and what other kind of permitting that we see going on, and what kind of increases, decreases, trends are we looking at. This slide shows historical CPI percentages on the far right column, similar to that other sheet I showed you. One of the things I like about this slide is it shows that the property tax levy process, it's a lengthy process with multiple pieces of information coming in over multiple years. And so, you know, when that 1.4% CPI was finalized for calendar year '20, that really is the driving number for our 2023 fiscal year budget. And you kind of see that it's then applied to the 21 levy, people are paying those taxes in '22. And so you see kind of a relationship over multiple years. The one nice thing about this process, as you think about planning and forecasting, is you kind of know what's in the pipeline. It gives you, you know, not a really long look of certainty, but it definitely gives you a year or two where you kind of know what's coming around the corner. This slide shows our historical new growth and EAV amounts. The top line, which I would focus on, is we're just coming off a year with 12.1 million of new growth, and our existing EAV remained essentially flat for the year. So we'll keep an eye on where we fall for 2021 and probably get that information next summer. The limiting rate, another key component, and what does the limiting rate do? You know, if CPI is the percentage that increases our overall extension, the limiting rate, once that amount is calculated, that is the rate that's applied to new growth. So how do we get there? We take last year's extension, so the 2020 extension of 56.8. We multiply that by the 1.4%, then we divide that by the overall property value, EAV minus the new growth, and it kicks out the limiting rate of 2.9789. And one thing that I think is always important to remember, you know, we talk about different percentages and how much our, you know, estimated extension might go up, what is our levy request? But I think it's easily, sometimes easy to get confused, but the key component is, for District 39 residents, the average taxpayer bill for next year, our portion, would go up by about 1.4%. This slide shows kind of the relationship and why capturing new property growth is important. So the first column shows what would happen if we just captured CPI. We didn't ignore, we didn't make that levy request for new growth. You see the $1.9 billion of EAV, we hold it flat, no new property. District would receive $57.6 million, so an increase of $795,000 over 1.4%. Now we move to the middle column. Now we hop on the estimated $14 million of new growth. Now we're up to $58 million. And we still have the $795,000, but on top of that, we're getting an extra, an estimated extra $418,000. So when I look at kind of where we're at, typically that's between... So when I look at kind of where we're at, typically that's between 0.7 and maybe 0.8% on top of the increase. And then because of the way that the PTO laws are written, instead of writing a law that just says, new growth is 14 million, we're just going to give District 39 14 million. They say, no, you need to, you need to request an amount that's higher, you know, essentially higher than what you're likely to get. Because if you don't, we're only going to give you up to what you request. So if we had only requested 58,42,000 and we see an above average year in new growth and new growth comes in at 20 million, we would lose out on that amount above 14 million. So that's why we, it's commonly referred to as ballooning your levy request so that you can capture any potential new growth. So the far right column has 41.9 million of recommended new property growth in the levy request. Then you scroll down and you go down to the bottom right corner. And if all of that came to fruition, which does seem unlikely, that would be an additional 1.25 million dollars on top of the 795,000. So we would be requesting a levy request of 2.2% for the new growth for next year. And then this is a slide that shows by each levy area, the 2020 final tax extension amount, you see the 56.828 in the first column. Then you go to the middle column and that's the estimated extension. Or what we think is likely to occur, but that nears the 14 million of new growth average, that 58 million. And then the far right is what we would request that the board approve in November. And then whatever that new growth amount comes to, the Cook County would ultimately give that to us. So we are requesting 3.6 total percent increase in our levy over the 2020 extension. 1.4% of that is for CPI. And 2.2% of that is to try and capture all of the new property growth that is occurring within the District 39 boundaries. And that is the last of the slides. And just one other comment I wanted to throw in there before I open it up for discussion is we had talked about Senate Bill 508, I think a little bit last month. I didn't have a slide in there. I don't have anything new and from my perspective, this is like at the top of every business official's radar. It has been eerily quiet. I don't know that that makes me feel great because sometimes things just happen and then everybody gets notified. But we are definitely keeping an eye on that just because of the magnitude and scope of it.
That's, remind us what that bill was.
That is the one that Yeah, so Senate Bill 508 is the law that's currently in place that would, not optional, but required the Cook County assessor, treasurer, clerk to add back any refunds from November of 2020, November 1st of 2020 through the end of this month. And so for us, I keep up to date on that every week. We are now, for that period, we've got a couple of weeks left, but we're just over a million dollars. So barring any changes, when the 2021 tax extension is finalized and they start to send out bills, Cook County would be, under the current law, would be required to add about a million dollars on top of what I just talked about. So and as written, that requires no board action. There's really nothing for anyone to do.
Any comments? Oh, go ahead Frank.
Well, did somebody else?
No.
All right. I have a couple.
Yeah.
And a large part, almost all of them are based on the fact that this, as Don mentioned, is complicated and attracts rightly the attention of our community. So messaging and understanding is extremely important in this topic. So that's really the focus of all this stuff. I think last year's presentation to the, to the board was as good as any that I've heard in eight or nine years. So in terms of making it simple and not bringing in topics that, that added to discussions that didn't really apply to how things actually work, because it is complicated. So I would strongly recommend going back and looking at last year's presentation and just kind of get a feel for what was presented there. I mean, at the high level, what I always think of is the levy is capped by law. You always ask for a little bit more because they give you the greater of the cap or what you ask, or the lesser of the, lesser of the cap or what you ask. You have to justify it, which was at the sheet with the different funds. But that doesn't lock in what we actually spend on those funds until we get the levy. And then when all is said and done, the most you can get is the max and that goes into the tax base. That's kind of the high, high level summary, the way I think of it. People get caught up on the numbers sometimes, especially when the numbers get big for the public. This year, the big advantage is that the inflation rate is relatively low in this formula. So what we're asking for is a number that'll sound reasonable. I mean, it's always reasonable, but it's how it sounds is what's critical. What's really important though is how we position it this year. Because next year, if the inflation number is five point something, the number we could be asking for could be eight. And that is going to be difficult to explain unless there's a lot of understanding in how we're doing things. So this year, straightforward, but it really sets the tone for next year, which could be a much more interesting conversation showing that. And again, it'll only be interesting because the numbers are bigger, not because we're doing anything different. But even us, this is complicated and when we try to explain it to the public, it gets much more complicated. So really, really try and make sure that that's in the back of your mind when we're presenting this year, that next year, the conversation is going to be harder. So how we present this year and what skills we learn this year are going to be really necessary. And the only other one that I wanted to just kind of quickly point out is, Cory, if you could go back to the slide with the like four different years, like the, you know, the inflation rate in one year and then in the tax cap. Cause I always like that slide to, for me to understand, I think it's five. This is, again, the one that I, I think of when I think of why our budgets are so sensitive to inflation increases. You know, what we're looking at right now and, you know, plug in a number, but that cost this year that you're actually spending money on could be going up by 5%. The CPI that impacts our budget for next year only went up by 1%. So our revenue only went up by 1% in the year that we're having costs go up by 5%. And that, that is how our budgets get out of skew, you know, with 2007, 8, 9, where that problem happened. So that's, that's more just a reminder, that's the way the formulas work. But that's why cash flow and expenses when inflation's going up get so complicated. Even if we plug in 5% next year, it doesn't show up until our revenue stream in 2024. And by that time, there could be like a second 5% year. So it just kind of builds. So that's why when we talked about budgets, we had relatively flat, relatively low CPI for literally decades. But the last time we had this kind of an uptick was the last time we had to seriously look at, you know, cutting costs and talking about things that we don't like to talk about, like taxes and regimens. So anyway, it's, it's, it's hard to get a feel for it when you just look at these numbers, but I just wanted to kind of remind myself, but also everybody else, that's where this comes in. A lot of our costs are tied to inflation a year or two before we get the revenue inflation.
Yeah, it was good to bring up those points. We, you and I and Lisa and others have been in these hearings where it's interesting. And those are good points. It will be hard to explain that, what, 7% I think, we're talking about next year increase. You know, it is what it is.
Yeah, I mean, we have some nice new property increases
Yeah.
coming in, which is great, but yeah, that is, I think adding the cap is 5%. I mean, if inflation's 5.3, we don't even get all of the inflation number into the levy. So not this year, but, but how we talk about it this year, how we think about it this year, how we start educating the public this year will make next year better.
Well, and as you point out, important to note that inflation is actually affecting our costs this year.
Yeah.
Even though we aren't, we aren't levying that significantly this year.
Well said. All right. Thank you Cory. You have more?
Yeah. Supplemental debt levy.
Yeah, there you go.
This will be really, really quick. So I just kind of want to provide a little bit of base background information. So let me just share one. Hopefully people can see this. So anyway, so when you issue bonds, this really goes back to a couple of months before I, before I got here. The district issued bonds in 2020. And this goes back to kind of the way that the property tax laws and everything are written. And, you know, why do you need to go through and do certain things? So one of the things that allows us to issue that without going out to refer them is the fact that we have a debt service extension base. So you see it in the second column to the left. So there's an amount. So for 2020 tax year, that amount was 1,569,000. And so what the law says is that if you have a debt service extension base, that amount that you can levy to repay principal and interest on your bonds grows by CPI every year. However, and so it's reasonable when you're issuing bonds and you're paying them over five, 10, 20 years, that you might want to, especially if you have a projects that you need to address now, that you might want to set up your debt structure where you're paying a little bit more every year because you know you're going to get some CPI increases. Well, the law makes you, if you decide to go that route, the law makes you pass a supplemental debt service levy to recognize future CPI increases. So in this particular case, when we issued the bonds, we did not know that the CPI percentage for tax year 2021 was going to be 1.4%. And the debt was structured in a way that to have Cook County assess enough under debt service to, to pay back all of our bonds in that particular year, we need to have the board pass a resolution that directs Cook County to increase our debt service extension base. And so the one thing that you need from this is it's a vote and it's a resolution independent of our, our normal tax levy. And whereas the normal tax levy needs to be approved and filed by the end of December, this one, this particular debt service levy, supplemental levy, doesn't need to be approved and filed with Cook County until the end of February. So we have some time, but I did want to put it on the board's radar that this is something that would impact us for 2021. The dollar amount of the supplemental levy is relatively small. When I look at it, the information I got from Liz Hennessy at Raymond James, we were talking about $20,000. But so this is certainly an optional thing. One of the things for boards to consider is that typically your debt service fund, the county will levy a percent, a couple percentage points higher than what you need, knowing there's going to be some uncollectibles. And so one of the things you see is your debt service fund will over time slowly build up. Now where that becomes valuable is that when you have a bond issuance in the future, it can allow you to structure your debt in a way that you can pay off, you can make interest payments before, that become due before the new debt structure can get added to the property tax process. So it really provides a level of flexibility for boards to pass these supplemental debt levies. Cause if you don't, then it kind of eats away at your debt service fund reserves. And one other note, and I, like I said, this is just really kind of baseline information. And I have been communicating with Liz and I think in the, at our December meeting, we'll have her out here and we can talk about this amongst another, you know, kind of debt related issue. But I'm happy to answer any questions or if people just want to table it until November, December, that is, that is fine as well.
Related to this, and it sounds like that might be what we hear next time or in the meeting. Again, in the, in the era of inflation, even temporarily going up, are there any opportunities to lock in lower tax rates on the bonds? I mean, are there any bonds coming up?
So, so the topic that I had been communicating with Liz is if you think back to our five-year kind of one-page summary, color-coded of construction projects. At the top, we have kind of like every few years, there's an opportunity for debt certificates, which we pay from operating funds or issuing additional bonds. And so one of the topics that I want Liz to talk about with us in December is coming up for fiscal year 23, but she actually pointed out, we could probably do at some point in 2022, is our debt certificates are eligible for a re, to be refunded and then issue some new ones, which flows nicely and funds the projects, helps to fund the projects we want to do next summer. So I will have her address. One of the things I had directed her to start thinking about was, you know, the interest rate components, you know, where, where might we have opportunities, whether it's other bond issuances or the debt certificates? So she should be able to address all that at our December financing meeting.
Go follow up on that? So my recollection is we do five-year.
I've seen, typically what I've seen, I think, so the law, the max is 20 years. Looks like District 39 typically goes for 10 years, but then tries to, if there's an opportunity, refund and refund at year five, if there's an opportunity to do so and then issue more. I think that's what you guys, my recollection, last time. And I think what Liz had told me, that would be kind of the intent for sometime during calendar year 2022, refund whatever remaining debt certificates were there and then issue some new ones, get some new money for projects.
So I think Frank, what you're asking is should we borrow a lot more at low rates with the expectation that inflation is going to take care of us later?
It really was more on the refinancing part of it than the borrowing more money. But I mean, both are topics to discuss, I guess, but really it just didn't, again, in the background of rising interest rates and rising interest rates aren't even just tied to inflation, which may or may not be a one-year flip. It's also, you know, fiscal tightening lessons. Historical interest rates are significantly higher than current interest rates. So it's a topic that is timely. So it's it's a topic that is timely. Um, and there's a little window and after that window, then you're just chasing the herb instead of getting ahead of it.
Could it presumably extend the maturity of the bond? Do we have payments that would sit in?
Yes.
We could not prepay.
Right.
Better than, well, I mean, I don't think you can extend the the locked-in rate, but we usually prepay so that we have more money available. We could roll down the prepaid.
Any other thoughts on on, so it's, yeah, I think we're probably a year ahead of the real issues. I bet, but, you know, we think about this all the time or not many of us think about this all the time because it's important. Um, I wanted to just lay, talk about my perspective a little bit just as a thought on having, you know, been on the board for a while and talk about this. Um, so CPI for me is a problem just because it always goes up. But but the people who pay the taxes, their wages and salaries don't always go up. And I've always thought of back years ago when we we had a lot of issues that part of the problem was wages and salaries in the U.S. really hadn't gone up for a long time. But CPI just keeps going up. It's a big problem. I was thinking about just lately, I think wages and salaries have gone up quite a bit overall in the U.S. So I got my fingers crossed and I'm looking at the system of the people here. I think wages and salaries, my understanding is it's gone up quite a bit in excess of inflation.
Yeah, without, well, no, actually, the, without getting too wonky and.
Yeah, don't do it, Frank.
And and the disclaimer that I'm not necessarily the the expert.
Yeah.
The wages went up slightly less than inflation. So it went up a big number, but inflation went up a big number. So it 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 gets complicated quickly. Is probably the right way to say that. But it it, this year wasn't that wages. Wealth went up a lot, but wages didn't go up as much as inflation.
How about this? It's always good to have your own perspective on these issues because you're going to need it. Right, that's it. I think we're done. Liz, bye now. Go back over to you.
Hey, great. Well, thank you on these conversations. Um, we will move to strategy and I will turn it over to you. I hope this will be Mr. Schneider, babe. Thank you. Uh, as a team, we are really uh pleased to be here with the board today to review our action steps for our strategic plan, which just recently was adopted by the board. So we are going to take a few moments and walk through our action steps that are proposed for this year, remembering that the cycle is a bit abbreviated this year because we were still finishing up our strategic plan and the process of adoption as we were starting this school year. So in future years, we'll we'll be a little, um, that we'll have a a more extended time period for the actual action steps. Um, but this year, with the strategic plan being adopted and then rolling right into the action steps, we're eager to get started and some of these steps have already started. So I will share my screen. And remind the board that we are talking about our action steps for this school year. Let me see if I can advance the slides. Uh, this is connected to our strategic plan. The planning process was implemented through CEC and we have a five-year plan. Uh, we feel really good about this plan. It is an ambitious plan. Uh, but it's nice to have a vision of the next five years and what we hope to accomplish um as we complete our action steps. So as we went through our planning process, we really focused on the mission, the vision and the values of our community, of our district as a whole, and what we are trying to accomplish. And then we um were able to identify the goals and strategies, how we will gauge our success and what we will do differently in these next five years to accomplish that mission and vision. That provided us the strategic plan. And as we talked last month, the strategic plan encompasses our mission and our vision, um, our core values and that portrait of a scholar that we hope to see across our district, which again is all supported by our core values. We've identified the five goals that we hope to accomplish and each goal has two to three strategies supporting our success within that goal. We as a team then um looked at those goals and strategies and knew that we needed to start with a a look at how we are leading moving forward. Uh, we set out our next steps being that action plan and some promotional campaigning as well as identifying the key performance indicators. We know, however, that we have some foundational work to do before we launch right into these strategies. And we learned some of this as we started our um post-planning work with CEC, looking at our leadership and uh the structures that we have in place for implementing um these strategies. So we talked a little bit about the Strategic Management Group, which is a partner of CEC and doing some training with CEC. Um, Arlena came back and worked with our leadership team on the eight dimensions of strategic management. We did some assessment and some learning about the foundational work that's really most important to ensure that the efforts we're making are sustainable, meaningful and relevant to the mission and vision of the district. With that, we identified the need for a district strategic advisory team. We recognized that as an administrative team, we have a a really strong team supporting this work, but we don't want to do this work alone. And if, in fact, we are to make this work sustainable, reflective of our entire community, um, we really very much hope that we will have a strategic advisory team of stakeholders who will guide and advise us. Again, this year, our action steps needed to be laid out based on the work that is already underway and the vision we're hoping to accomplish. But we do hope that in future years, our action steps will be advised by a group of stakeholders. And so um as we went through the training, as we assessed our leadership team and some of the strategic management elements that we have in place, we recognize that an advisory team will be really helpful to us. So as we look at this, and and this really supports also goals three and four. So when we get there, you'll hear a little bit about that. Um, but we see the district strategic advisory team as a representative stakeholder group, providing leadership, collaborative decision-making and ongoing progress review and monitoring. We've looked through um who we think should be on this team and we really want it to represent not only our administrative team, but our teachers and our staff, our parents and our board members on this team. We envision this team to be about a 30-person team and we'd like to get started on recruiting membership for this team as quickly as possible. So we'll be talking a little bit more about this team after we go through our action steps. Uh, but I wanted to highlight this is one element that we see as really foundational. We had, um, we really enjoyed and I think benefited from the input that was provided throughout our strategic planning process. And we see that as being necessary in the next five years if we are to really accomplish the mission and vision as we set forth. Um, so this team will be responsible for reviewing and forming and evaluating the implementation of the strategic strategic plan as well as the related annual action planning and performance. The team would provide input and study progress related to the strategic plan in an ongoing way. And they will be advisory to me and um to our teams as we move forward in improvements and action plans and progress monitoring. We see one of their first steps this year being establishing and reviewing key performance indicators. The board will remember we did a pretty intensive data retreat that lasted about three days um as a strategic planning team. And we hope now that um the district strategic advisory team will look back at that data and also envision some new data that we can use to really evaluate in an ongoing way the progress toward accomplishment of our strategic plan as well as those uh annual action plans. So we'll be identifying, our our hope is, our vision is that we would identify key performance indicators, both leading and lagging indicators. Um, as I mentioned before, we see this as an annual process of improvement. Um, we'll be monitoring progress fall, winter and spring. And so we would envision this team to meet three to four times a year. Certainly in the first year, it would meet much more frequently because we will need support as we identify those key performance indicators. We also know that as a foundational step for our board, as we pursue this new strategic planning effort, that there's some leadership the board wishes to pursue and we're really excited to support that as well. We thank you for your support of this longer-term strategic plan effort. And so the board has scheduled a self-evaluation and improvement planning for strategic leadership and oversight with the IASB that is scheduled for December 6th. I know our board members have already marked their calendars for that date. And again, IASB, a representative, will come in and work directly with the board on leadership for implementation of this plan. And I think this is a really important foundational step for the next five years and for our success. Yes.
So is that um, that's a Monday. Is that all day then?
No, it's a Monday evening.
Oh, okay.
I think the meeting is scheduled to start at 7:00 P.M. Um, depending on people's needs coming right from work, if you need to um have some food, I think we'll have some food available at 6:30, just prior to the start of the meeting at 7:00. And because that is a self-evaluation retreat of the board, it is a closed session and a second session. Led again by the IASB.
It'd be on the calendar, just put it out.
Thank you for making the time for that. All right. So with that, then, we've looked at our action steps again. Some of these are already underway. Um, and others, we know we have a shorter timeframe to accomplish these steps this year. Again, we're really focused on the foundational work that will help to lay the groundwork for our our work over these next five years. So our team, our goal champions, we learned, we need to identify goal champions for each goal area. Um, and we were already kind of starting to lay that groundwork. So our goal champions will talk the board through each of these action steps. Some of these steps have multiple layers underneath them. And so we're really trying to give the board a a, an idea of those steps that will be pursued this year. So with that, we'll start with goal number one. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and read goal number one. This is Katie Lee and I are the goal champions for this and she's going to talk through a little bit of the action steps. So the goal, as we remember, is to ensure a differentiated education that provides a strong foundation of rigorous academic learning. And the strategies that we identified under this are to differentiate instruction and supports to ensure and monitor a strong academic foundation of challenging, meaningful and growth-oriented experiences for all students, to implement structured staff collaboration focused on data-informed practices to support rigorous academic and growth for all students, academic rigorous achievement and growth for all students, and to provide differentiated professional development opportunities to support effective, innovative and growth-focused classroom activities, practices. Katie?
Yes, and the action steps, so the critical action steps for the first year would be to audit classroom-level assessments for reading, writing, math in order to identify any gaps in need. Um, audit classroom-level instruction, teaching strategies or tools in order to identify any gaps in need as well, including um auditing supplemental intervention, teaching strategies and tools in order to identify any gap in need. And what we mean um by this is to review what is happening at the classroom level. Our teachers use many sources of data, not just the ones we report out publicly to the Board of Education. And we know that they are powerful, so we want to learn from them. And we want to um take a look at what type of data they find most meaningful as indicators of moving on and progress for their students as well. And I think that as a result, we will come up with some recommendations for people in improving our faculty system life. Um, so and then the uh another critical action step, as you've heard many times, was to engage administrators and learning and and training about coverage data-wise improvement process to improve how they, how we, I should say, uh facilitate staff data meetings, analyze student data in order to gather funding instruction and improve collaborative conversation. The administrators are engaging in online class that most of us have yet to finish. But we also have Adam Karad-Sheffer, who will be, I mean, in-house. He is a data-wise certified coach who lives in the area. And so we have contacted with him to come and teach us and so that we can work on it. Um, train LBSs in Orton-Gillingham who will send reading strategies to increase efficacy in reading instruction for students with disabilities with all of strategies and programs that we felt were really necessary for our learning behavior specialists to um improve on their skills upon. And so that was, that's something that we plan to do and have done already. Um, completing an evaluation, review and analysis of special education programming and services to identify areas of spring and need with the assistance of Atlantic Research Partners. I believe the board is very familiar with this particular action on goal since we've spoken about it so many times. Uh, we want to continue our data meetings with improved structure and focus on grade level and student level data analysis in order to identify and refer students with intervention needs, support and/or enrichment in reading and math. And also strengthen the primary reading instruction assessment and intervention for elementary students. It was evident that um that's something that we should really look into. We're doing a good job. We can do a better job in that area. And so um that was one of the critical action steps that we wanted to identify.
For goal two, um, this is supportive community. And for this one, Kelly and I are the goal champions. So I will go ahead and read the goal and then that about the action steps. Um, the goal is to cultivate a supportive and inclusive learning community that is responsive to the social, emotional and behavioral needs of each student. Our strategies are to implement a consistent and proactive curriculum addressing social, emotional and behavioral needs of students and to strengthen the sense of belonging, engagement, representation and agency for students through diverse welcoming opportunities with community building, leadership and student student network.
Thanks, Kristin. Um, our action steps are auditing the school and classroom level positive behavior systems and assessments in order to identify strengths and areas for improvement. That includes inventorying positive behavior practices throughout the district, reviewing classroom systems used across the district, reviewing school-based systems and then analyzing strengths and weaknesses of what, weaknesses of what we have in order to plan for the future. Uh, investigating district-wide positive behavior systems in order to make recommendations. Again, that was part of that first area. And then investigate methods of progress monitoring and data collection related to student behavior and make recommendations for implementation. So looking again at what is best practice in this area and what we can do to um improve our implementation. Uh, next is identify the diverse students needing behavioral intervention outside of the classroom and the type of interventions used. So really building our toolkit for interventions, looking at how we match those interventions to the behavioral needs that we have and uh what we can can implement as a result. Um, develop and implement social, emotional systems of support using a district-wide framework and approach. Uh, that's currently in process with the implementation of the SEL framework and responsive classroom approach district-wide. We had a great um professional development last Monday uh for that uh responsive classroom implementation. Um, auditing SEL assessment tools and making recommendations based on effectiveness is a part of um what we're looking at when we look at the social, emotional systems of support and also planning for future professional development needs. Um, so our committee this year will be looking at, now that we've implemented the beginning steps, what do we need to keep moving this forward? And then plan and get and engage staff in data-focused, informed data meetings at the grade and classroom level in order to identify students with intervention needs in social, emotional skill development. That's really our administration of the DESSA, which is the Deveraux Essential Skills, Student Skills Assessment at kindergarten through um second grade or EC through second grade. And um mesh assessments, which is the student self-assessment that we use in third through eighth grade. Um, we are administering those right now to gain some baseline information. And then our teachers will be looking at that data and looking at what interventions can we put in place um to help develop those social emotional skills.
And for goal three, professional community, as Lucky and I are the goal champions. Um, the goal is fostering a, foster a professional community that values, supports, develops and retains highly effective staff. And we've identified two strategies for this goal. Um, the first being improve collaborative and shared decision-making structures to strengthen representation, engagement and agency for staff. representation, engagement, and agency for staff, and also to cultivate a more equitable and inclusive level of community by developing staff expertise to support diverse learners through differentiated instruction and culturally supportive teaching.
Action steps for goal three include establishing a district strategic advisory team. We've heard about that earlier today, but that is first and foremost the priority of this goal, to help us monitor and watch our progress through our action steps across the whole strategic plan. The second action step that we're proposing is the school work, looking at our school-work calendar to determine opportunities that might better suit professional development trainings, working for a variety of options to see how we might be better capture some opportunities to work with our staff most effectively for the training that we've identified as needed. So our goal with that is to help identify options moving forward. The third action step is to look for opportunities for all of our staff to engage with each other. So last June, I believe it was, we talked about the movie night where we all came together, so we, of our staff, of our families, and having opportunities where we can come together as a work community, school community across schools to engage with each other and build those relationships. The next action step is related to staff and looking at when our employees hit critical milestones in their employment, be it after their first year or as they're leaving us, but really to start those conversations and discuss with staff what is working well for them, what are we doing well, and what are areas where we might be able to do a better job. And then that final action step is to continue to engage and work with our staff under committees, whether it's at the district level or at the school level, so that we, all voices can be heard, represented when we are making decisions or looking to make changes in the
Goal four, family partnerships. Kelly Jackson and I are the goal champions. So the goal is to strengthen partnerships by connecting, collaborating, and communicating with families and communities to advance teaching and learning. Our strategies are to improve school-home communication through consistent and effective strategies, especially those focused on communicating student performance, goal-setting, and growth monitoring. Also, implement strategies to better support successful transitions from fourth to fifth grade and sixth to seventh grade for students and parents.
Our action steps as a part of this goal are to build a strategic communication plan for District 39 and individual schools to keep stakeholders updated on progress while continuing to build awareness. And part of that will include goals and objectives, who our target audiences are, and what key messages are needed so that we are effective in our communication. And also developing and maintaining a tactical plan, including tools and timelines to deliver planned communications. There was a CRC report done last year or two years ago that has not yet been implemented, so we want to refer to that report as we work on this goal. Secondly, to provide district-wide monthly parent education events to facilitate student social, emotional, academic growth and progress monitoring. And this is something that we have put in place thanks to a lot of Tony's hard work, and we will continue. But we, along the way now, we plan to solicit feedback regarding the extent of the effectiveness of the program and also what else are we missing? So what can we do to tailor it really to parent needs and community needs? Finally, to develop a comprehensive transition plan for fourth and fifth grade that accounts for identified areas of need based on student and parent surveys and feedback. So we are currently gathering feedback from students and parents regarding the fourth and fifth grade transition that just happened over the summer, and are looking for suggestions and ways to improve the overall experience. So we're meeting the needs of both our students and our parents in that transition process. We're also engaging with our special education teams at fourth and fifth grade to look at that process and what we can improve with that transition and how to better serve our students with IEPs in that process. We're looking at also how do we, how do we address the needs of parents in that transition in a better way? So in the past, we've held webinars or in-person meetings, but is there a better, more efficient way to do that and really target specific needs of parents? And also looking at the social connection needs of parents and students as we have students from four different buildings coming into our schools. How can we better connect them before they make that transition and offer some events and opportunities for kids to mix and mingle before the schooling starts?
Goal five is stewardship of resources. Corey and I are the goal champions for this. The goal is to ensure the effective use of resources to sustain practices that promote growth. Strategies include implementing long-term capital planning focused on facility maintenance as well as, as well as examining resource allocation practices, including staffing based on best instructional models and.
The action steps related to goal five are as follows. Review five-year capital improvement plan biannually with a focus on facility maintenance and upgrades to sustain practices that promote growth. Review process for prioritizing building-based capital improvement projects. Develop cost estimates for projects in the next five to seven years, leading to a prioritized project list with estimated completion dates. Monitor legislative adjustments related to property tax funding formulas, real estate tax appeal refunds, pension cost shifts to anticipate, consider, and plan for potential impact on District 39's availability of resources, incorporating findings into the presentation of the annual five-year projections, which is done in December. Identify a process to explore and evaluate class size and staffing patterns across non-home room instructional environments at the fifth to eighth grade levels to identify where under and over enrollment patterns may have emerged.
So that is, again, a pretty high-level review of a lot of work that we intend to complete this year. The action steps you'll see really are the foundational work for much of what we hope to accomplish over these next five years. We're excited. Some of this work is already launched, such as our responsive classroom work, our SEL work, and, and some of the budgeting work as well as our professional development with our administrative team. Our MTSS committee will be responsible for a lot of these steps, especially under goal one and two, so we appreciate their commitment to this work as well. So again, a lot of foundational work. We do very much hope that this new mindset will provide some new results and, and some new ways of monitoring our success as well. So we're happy to be able to present these action steps to you, and we're eager for your, your feedback and review of these steps prior to our presentation for approval at the Board of Ed meeting.
I'll open it up for discussion, but I just, I have to say, I think it's impossible not to be struck by how exciting and ambitious and rich this plan is. And to hear you all talk about what that might mean for this year, I just think is so exciting to help us move this year forward beyond COVID. And I personally am so grateful that the district was willing to be so vulnerable. I don't think there are many districts or even organizations in general that are willing to look at, to get as much data and to make yourselves as vulnerable to see what can we do better in every area. So this is incredibly exciting. I know we all have questions and ideas and comments, so I'll open it up and just share that. Bonnie?
Thanks. I have a question about the advisory team. Like you said you were going to start recruiting for that. What is your vision for when the team would be implemented and how long does it take?
So typically, it would take about a month to recruit members for that team. So with the board's approval of our action steps, we'll get started on that right away. And we do envision this team continuing for the five years of this strategic plan. Again, meeting three to four times a year, certainly in this year, it may be more frequent than that, though we have a condensed timeframe. So we'll, we'll see how that all works out. We actually see it as working just a little bit like our metrics advisory team worked last year. We found a lot of really good success with that, with stakeholders coming together, providing some feedback to us. There may be some needs for smaller groups to meet outside of those meetings. We see someone who's joining that team ideally would be serving for, for two years and then with some rollover of that. But we'll see. We have to get through that recruiting process. In terms of our parent representatives on that team, we would very much hope that some members would be coming from our strategic planning team, simply because then they have that background, at least for the first year as we get started.
I don't know, it's not going to be the first one, but, um, again, lots, lots of good work fleshing out a number of the goals. What, what I want to focus on, I guess, is the concept is in, in goal-setting and implementation, one of the things that always comes in is measurement. And there's some places where I, I think there is some measurement, some places where I'd like to understand better than measurement concept or, or maybe even work toward implementing more measurements or some measurements. As, as a positive and went through these things quickly, but in the family partnership category, there was some specific items that said, you know, we get feedback from, from parents, we get feedback from the community. It's assumed that, that we would look at seeing if we were, were getting better, but at least there was a measurement step that we were getting that type of input from, from the community related to that specific goal. So as kind of a example of what I would look for in some of the other goals, that, that at least was directionally what I was looking for.
Yes, and thank you for pointing that out. Again, as we were going through developing these action steps, we started to conceptualize what key performance indicators might be, and we realized that us doing that as an administrative team in isolation of a district strategic advisory team didn't feel like it was really representative of the, the vision and mission that we're trying to accomplish. So our hope is that this year, as that first step of the district strategic advisory team, we will identify what those key performance indicators are in terms of measurement. How will we measure our success as we move through this? And again, I think we have some data already available to us, but there may be some other measurements that we want to start to gather and monitor as we go through, and, and this is a great example of that. So thank you for pointing that out, Frank.
So that was kind of the example of, an example in here of that. And then I go to a question of, I didn't, I didn't see that same level in goal one. I mean, there's a, there's a lot of, I would consider background work, training, educating, rolling out, and, and a lot of detail and a lot of stuff. I mean, a lot of things to do in one year. But, but from a measurable standpoint, they're kind of binary. You know, did, did we have a training session? Yes. There wasn't a, and did things improve because of that? You know, did we implement this? Yes or no? And, and I'm sure you'll do a great job, and it will be done, and it'll be done well, but there isn't a step or statement that says, and did it work? You know, I mean, you can, you can present good material and just kind of go over heads or not get a score. And, and I particularly come back in goal one, that the goal is student achievement and growth, and there isn't a step that talks about how to measure that or how we might measure that in the future. And, and again, this is the, the first year of the plan, and there's a lot of background work, but I would have, I would, I'd still hope that there'd be, one of the action steps would be identify a measurement criteria. We wouldn't necessarily in the first year have to implement the measurement criteria, but to have a, an action step that says, you know, identify a measurement criteria, because there's always a lag. If you don't have a measurement criteria, then the next year you can't measure it. So, you know, then you're into year three before you actually get to the, the sentence that says student achievement and growth. These action steps are making sure that we're really doing a good job or even a better job than we do now. It doesn't, and the implication is that if we're, if our teachers and administrators are well-educated and understanding that, that will reflect in student achievement, but there isn't a statement that says we're measuring student achievement or we're identifying, did we do a good job of doing these good things?
Go ahead if you'd like to.
I, so I might be understanding it differently, but to me, a lot of these are explicitly about data. And so there would be improving our ability to analyze student achievement data, right? The data-wise treatment, so that instruction, analyzing our assessments, analyzing our curriculum. To me, implicit in that is a deep study of our data and achievement.
But it's, that's helping us do a better job, and that we're good as, as an organization doing that, and it helps us do a better job, but the output is student achievement. The output isn't that our teachers are better trained.
Right, so Frank, again, remember that the district strategic advisory team, that first step, and we kind of front-loaded that before we even got into talking about the action steps, because the first step of that team is to identify the measurement criteria, to really look at the data that's available and identify those key performance indicators in each goal area that we want to monitor. That is, that's the overarching picture, the foundational work that needs to happen so that we can all agree to what are those measurement criteria that we'll be looking at.
And, and I guess that, that's at least what I was trying to say. There isn't a sentence that just says that we've identified criteria in goal one. It says that we're educating people on how to identify a criteria.
But Frank, that's because it's, it is the overarching foundational work of the district strategic advisory team. Step one, and I can go back to that slide and identify where that was. Let me, let me head back there, because we, we anticipated this feedback and wanted to make sure that we front-loaded that to identify the first step of that district strategic advisory team being really looking at what are those key performance indicators. So let me go back to that slide, because we really wanted to make sure that that was foundational for everyone's understanding, that yes, student achievement needs to be measured and monitored, as do each of these goal areas in an outcome-oriented way. So if you look here at this slide, the next step is to establish the district strategic advisory team, and their first course of action is to establish and review key performance indicators. So that's those measurement outcomes that in each goal area, not just in student achievement, but in the professional communities, in the parent partnerships, we really want to identify and agree to what are those outcome measures that we'll be tracking and monitoring.
Yeah, and, and I didn't tie those two things together quite the way you just did. The advisory team talks about what I was just talking about. The, the goals don't, or at least the goal one doesn't refer back to the setting levels or, or identifying criteria to monitor. So that, that, that was the disconnect for me. I mean, the advisory group is doing a lot of the, what I was just asking about, and I hadn't quite tied that together, so, you know. But the goal itself doesn't say anything about that particular step. And it does a little bit in the family partnership, that's why I brought that one up as kind of an example, that there is, you know, there is a way of monitoring, of getting feedback and thus identifying if you're making progress, but in. But in Goal One, all the action steps are important educational steps, but none of them record. And then, you know, begin setting, monitoring goals for the next year or anything like that. So there isn't a direct tie from the advisory committee to the Goal One action steps for this year. And I wouldn't expect that we've monitored this year, but to say that we just, we're looking at how to monitor, we're studying, we're analyzing ways to monitor, that isn't reflected in the goal.
So if I'm hearing your suggestion, it is to add an additional action step, which explicitly states that we will identify the measurement criteria for student achievement.
Yeah, that, that, that would be, and again, that ties back to the strategy. And I know it was added at the last minute, but you know, strategy one, you know, ensure and monitor. So it would tie back to setting a framework for how we would monitor.
Thanks for that suggestion. Katie?
I just wanted to offer, cause this is a new process for us. And, and in helping me understand, it was really the components of the five-year, multi-year plan was, hey, here's the goal, here are our strategies, and here's the key performance indicator that will be developed. We have indicators currently and we wouldn't let that slide. So for example, you know, we use MAP, our MAP results and statewide assessments. And so the way we were coached in thinking about action steps would be, what are you gonna do differently to produce results? So one thing that we've always heard and identified is, while our student achievement's always good, even through the pandemic, we've maintained a pretty solid mean that our students are achieving well. But how are we doing on growth? And that's been the feedback we've received from the board and the community and just even ourselves reflecting on, how can we do better? And so the way we were approaching these action steps is whatever that key performance indicator will become once the strategic advisory team determines that, knowing what all of our assessments are, that we wanted to do something different. Like where could we investigate? What are our action steps? In hopes that it will influence that growth to be different. We don't wanna do all of the same things again. And so I think that's why when Amy, you identified, wow, you guys are being really vulnerable here and trying to dig through and see, and try, try to do things differently to produce different outcomes. And so that was, and I'm not, you know, we can add any action steps that the board would like, but I think for me, my understanding was, what are you gonna do differently? Action steps that will produce a difference in the KPI once it's determined. So let's say, for example, it's gonna be MAP. You know, we've used MAP a lot. All of these action steps are what we're proposing to say that we will make an impact on growth and you will see that result through that assessment or whatever other indicator the team comes up with. So that's the way I thought of it. And I know that we're thinking about a dashboard of trying to, you know, communicate our progress. And so for me, it would be goal, KPI, strategies. Like that information would all be, you know, put out there and monitored over time. So that's all I wanted to offer. It was just a perspective that I had to grasp that was different than in the beginning.
I appreciate that. Along those lines, I think that the initial question I had was, I was expecting more of a goal, KPI, strategy to accomplish the key performance indicator. So when I started walking through, that, you know, is this, are these the correct strategies to reach the metrics? You know, the data, the, the growth, whatever those numbers will be, that we've all agreed upon. So when I initially looked, I thought, well, where are, how do we have the action steps without KPIs? Shouldn't we all agree on, you know, who we wanna be when we grow up and then build the action steps to address that? But throughout this conversation today, I understand now that that is going to be somewhat the role of the advisory team to come up with those KPIs. But I also kind of wonder, you know, what if, you know, there are some that I was thinking, how long? How will we state what are the objectives of what are, and what exactly does that mean? And, you know, is this a, I'm just struggling with kind of approving the action steps without walking through them and saying these are the KPIs. And that we can't actually come through and figure out what the KPIs are for each action step. So I'm, I'm still working through that because I think I just thought it was going to be goal, KPI, strategic steps to accomplish. So, and then, you know.
Yeah, let me just add, I think, just in relation to that comment, let me build upon that because I think that's what our administrative team was thinking as well. And as we went through the training with Arlena, we learned that to do that in isolation of an advisory team would be arbitrary and would also step us backward in love the kinds of shared decision-making and engagement that we're really hoping to foster through this new strategic planning process. So you are absolutely right. And Frank, your acknowledgement of that is right on as well. And I think we're all sitting a little bit in a place of like, oh, this is new. This is a little bit different than what we had anticipated. But I, I do think it's the right step to take to ensure that our teachers, our administrators, our parents all have a voice in identifying what those key performance indicators are, which is a little like going slow to go fast, going slow to go right along this journey. So that discomfort sits with us as well. So thanks for acknowledging that.
Appreciate that at the end of the discussion today, having the community involved in that, and the collaborative experience, building it together, reflecting what the community or the groupers see as important as well, or what we think is the issue. And then, you know, my other thought was I, when I looked through, when I looked through all the information, there was a lot. A lot of the action items are about information gathering, research, and identification. How do you guys foresee this stuff moving forward? Does it change on an annual basis? Where we stay the, you know, the research and the identification, trying to do to exactly what we've identified and then, you know, evolving what we want to accomplish there? So just from a procedural standpoint, is it living, breathing? Is it, you know, static until this time next year? How is that?
Yeah, a great question. So what we envision is each year we will have action steps that we'll bring forward to the board. Those will be advised by not only our administrative team, but by that district strategy advisory team as well. And, and the way, as we started to build out these action steps, we have an idea of what those next steps might be for next year. And so they will build on each other. So if this year we're evaluating where the gaps are for assessment, next year might be folding in those new assessments or bringing in the support for trainings so teachers can administer and understand those assessments. So it is this, this year's action steps then lead to what actions will take place next year, which then leads to what action steps will take place the year after. We started to kind of map that out, and so we have an idea of where we think we're going, but we won't know until we complete the evaluations and the steps from this year and then establish those for next year as well. Great question.
And I think that speaks to what you started with, which is that this year is a little different than the other years moving forward because the plan, but the goals will remain the same.
It's so impressive. I really, I like it all. I think from a presentation standpoint, it, it might make some sense to go back to what we used to do. We did a planning process and just talked about maybe how this is the better way. But talk more about the past, in terms of when we describe what we're up to. It's quite a bit, but you know, a process organized, more stakeholder input. Oh, sorry. Yeah, organized, more stakeholder input, you know, and, but we did have a process in the past. And we did cover, you know, a bunch of issues. So I think that that might be helpful. Suggestion.
Thank you.
I think it's important to recognize that, like, all of these goals are, they're not new. You know, they're just, we're just looking at them in a different way. So maybe to focus on the differences of just the stuff.
Thank you.
I had a thought just for our own learning down the line at some point. I think it might be interesting for us to learn a little bit about it, the data-wise program of the district. And the teachers are learning about that. And it's a topic we've all had a lot of interest in. It would help us, not imminently, but over the next few years to learn, what is that approach? And, you know, how are those conversations conducted so we can have the same language on a surface level?
Do you incorporate that into the December retreat?
The training is far more extensive than the retreat would allow, but we can certainly start by getting the board some information.
Keep training where you all are, but just an understanding of the approach.
Yes, absolutely. So we can start by getting you some information. And then as we go through that leadership retreat with the board, that might be a step that the board wants to identify for their future action steps or own personal learning about that. So thank you.
I had two quick, hopefully quick follow-ups. When, when you tie all the pieces together, it, it seems pretty good. But the advisory committee, I think that's what it sounds like. Are there goals for that, to look at this? Like this is what we expect to get out of the advisory committee this year? Or is it more open-ended than that? Cause we're using, we expect to get out of the advisory committee things that would then add to the plan, but is that part of the definition of the advisory committee?
Yeah, so the advisory committee will help us to identify the measurement criteria for each goal area. That's the, the key performance indicators that we've identified. We could certainly articulate that a little bit differently on those earlier slides, but that's really the goal of the advisory team in this first year is to identify those measurement criteria.
Part of the charter of that. So, so yeah, documenting that or, you know, so there's just a way that we can follow through the steps, you know? And, and similarly, it'd be, I, I think it'd be useful if then there's a tieback from, from the goals to the advisory committee. I mean, just one of the action steps is that, you know, looking forward to the input from the advisory committee or just some way of documenting that, that relationship? Because there is this, there is this document which my preconception was, was kind of a standalone, this is what our strategy and goals are, but now there's an advisory committee that's outside of this document. So, you know, tying the two things together in word.
So under Goal Three, one of the first action step under Goal Three is to establish the district strategic advisory team that will monitor progress and offer suggestions. So it is specifically tied in there. We, we just pulled it out in the front because we see that as such important foundational work to start. But it is listed as an action step under Goal Three.
Frank, are you asking, like, once the advisory committee comes up with KPIs, are you just asking that those indicators become a part of the strategic plan under each goal? So that they're stated there or something different?
I think if we're gonna get them measurable, they have to be. I mean, this first year, I completely understand, you know, it's a learning baselining, you know, understanding and that the, the action steps are related to that. But to achieve the goals, there has to be implementing KPIs and monitoring KPIs, not just action steps that help us do a better job. I mean, that's, that's important, but there's gotta be a monitoring.
So, so I would agree with you that I would imagine moving forward at a different point, maybe, I don't know if it's next year or whenever they're identified, that those be in the strategic plan. But are you asking for something different now?
Aspirationally, I'm, it is a poor. I wanna, I wanna be the timeline, but also, you know, this is a five-year plan. I'd hate for us to be in year three before we had, you know, the first time we implemented a measuring step that was then a baseline. And then in year four, we identified if the baseline was getting better, whatever the category. That's an awful lot of time. I mean, I was hoping that this year would be when we would, by the end of this year, we would have the categories that we'd be monitoring so that next year we could start monitoring them. And by the end of next year, we'd be able to identify if we didn't make any progress. So.
Yes, or that's exactly the point.
Yeah.
So I, I'm just reading it quickly, but, but just at the surface level, that isn't as well reflected in these words. So just, I don't know how to tie those. What you're saying is what I'm asking, what I'm reading doesn't wipe it.
Right, cause they're not determined yet. So the intermediate step is what do we do until they're determined?
The anticipated timeline or, I mean, again, these are just bullet items and that always makes it tough, but the words you're saying and the bullet items don't wipe, tie those two things together yet.
I wonder if, Carrie, I wonder if on the slides we could kind of just explicitly put key performance indicator underneath the goal, cause that's what we're trying to measure. And then say to be determined for year one, to be determined by the district strategic advisory team. So would I imagine, if you look on your printout, it would be like Goal One, student achievement and growth, key performance indicator to be determined by the strategic advisory team, and then the action steps to follow. And so I think once, cause our initial reaction would be, oh, hey, we've had some indicator goal always. And we've met some of them sometimes and not what we'd like is the advisory team to tell us that's still a good indicator and that we'll continue doing that. So if you recall speaking about a past strategic plan, one of the goals under, always an outcome, I think we labeled it as an outcome, would be 65% of our students would meet their growth targets or, you know, that kind of thing. So instead of us, that's the old way, right? Instead of us saying, hey, this is what our key performance indicator is going to be. And to repeat that process now in a new approach, we wanted to share, hey, advisory team, this is what we've done before. Here's other sources of data too that you guys can consider. What do you, how would you advise us moving forward? Is that still the case or are there other assessments that we could use as a good indicator? But for the purposes of presentation, A, what I've heard is, could we share pre-five-year plan process compared to this current process? And then the other one is to explicitly state under the goal what the, that the key performance indicator would be moving forward. I don't know if that helps, but just wanted to offer.
Yeah, I think it does, again, from a documentation standpoint, reflecting what we're talking about here, a couple more words or another bullet would, would help.
It just shows that the structure is there.
Yeah.
I just had another question or thought that developed from what Katie was saying. Cause, you know, when we look at this like five-year strategic plan, are we looking at like the goals that we would have in five years? And then we look at each year as like, how close are we to getting to that goal? What if that goal is like, you know, we make 100 widgets. Right now we're making 10. And so every year we need to make a certain amount in order to, or are we looking at the five-year plan as like a platform to get to whatever goals we decide that year? Or are we looking at the five year plan as like a platform to get to whatever goals we decide that year, however we want to measure that? And so, I mean, I don't, I don't know if maybe that's helpful too in terms of having the advisory team come up with performance indicators, but also to sort of say, well, where do we want to be in five years? Because that's, that's sort of like the benefit of looking at it this way rather than just the end goal, right?
I, I, I think that we are doing both, right? So we, the advisory team will want us to want, we will want them to help us identify that, what will it look like in five years? But the action steps really are what, how we're monitoring our success each year. And so we'll need to have kind of both happening at the same time. So absolutely. So we will update the presentation to reflect today's conversation. Thank you for that input. And then we will bring it back, the action steps for approval by the board at the upcoming board meeting. And the other item, and we've actually spent quite a bit of time already talking about this, is the district's strategic advisory team. Again, as we build a strong foundation of leadership, collaborative decision-making, ongoing progress review and monitoring for our five year plan, we would like to form a district's strategic advisory team. We see this team as being a collection of representative stakeholders to review and inform and evaluate implementation of the strategic plan. They will provide input and study progress related to the strategic plan. So we don't see this as a voting body, but similarly situated to the metrics advisory team, which helped to establish and review key performance indicators to guide decisions on refinement of the action plans and the implementation thereof. So the notes the board has received really detail out what we're envisioning here and having them establish and review those key performance indicators. We've identified what that team, that the members, the membership on that team, there's about 30 members, including administrators, teachers, staff, parents, and we would very much like to have two board members sitting at the table with us as we're going through that. And so we're hoping that the board would be able to identify or President Paling, you would name two members. And again, we, we are planning on this recruiting process to happen over the, this next month and then getting started soon thereafter with this team. So we do hope that there'll be some interest from the board to serve on this, on this team. We see the team is meeting at least quarterly and potentially more frequently in the first year. And again, that the team establishing and reviewing those key performance indicators really is the first charge of this team.
Okay, well, so we can move on to the board policy review.
Bring it over to you. Yes, thank you. So in, there is a first reading of Board Policy seven colon 180 on the agenda today. Every other year, the Illinois State Board of Education requires that the district's bullying policy be submitted for review. This policy was last updated in December 2020. And when submitted to ISB this fall, there were several elements that needed updating. So this policy has been updated to be compliant with the ISB feedback and has been reviewed by both the parent teacher advisory committee and the board's attorney. And so it's presented here today with those updates. Kristin, I know you helped to facilitate the parent teacher advisory committee. Is there additional background you might be able to provide to the board?
Yes, so the parent teacher advisory committee met last week and had two suggestions that they wanted to change. One was in the first paragraph, they changed non-hostile learning environments are important. They changed it to critical district goals. And then in the second paragraph, after physical or mental disability, one of the committee members wanted to add visible or unseen as another option. Those were the only changes that, that they had, that the parent teacher advisory committee had.
Those are reflected in the draft provided to the board today?
Yes.
Thank you.
And those, were they both cleared through our legal team?
Our attorneys have reviewed it, yes.
I was not, oh, sorry. Oh, I was not at that meeting, although I do serve on that committee. And I am not, I'm, I'm not supportive of those two changes. Just interested in what other board members have to say about that.
You tell us more.
Well, I, I don't think they're necessary. And you know, especially this physical or mental disability, visible or unseen. I'm not even sure what that means. Because it should simply be, you know, bullying on the basis of a disability, you know, is prohibited. So I'm not really sure what that's getting at. And if necessary, and you know, with the critical in the first paragraph, preventing students from engaging these behaviors is a district goal. A goal is, you know, by nature critical. I don't know, it just seems like it's a little excessive or suggesting that other district goals are not as important as this one. Anyway, that's my input.
I'm sure a little background about the conversation. Kristin, before you do so, I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you point to where that language is in the actual policy so that we can be looking at that as you're talking through the background?
In the first paragraph, at the very first paragraph, last line, critical district goals. It was important district goals according to the, the ISB language. And in the second paragraph, in the middle where it says physical or mental disability, visible or unseen was added in the parentheses.
So the, the word critical was changed from importance?
Yes.
And in the second paragraph, those parentheses, those three words were added. Thank you.
They changed though, just to clarify, changed from what ISB was recommending, not from existing policy. That's why it didn't have a strength through.
Yes.
Thank you for clarifying. Thank you.
And I will say that, that the parent teacher advisory committee, one, one member felt strongly about these. The rest of the committee did not feel strongly about them, but I think they didn't feel, they were okay with accepting the, the recommendation of the one individual. So there wasn't a strong feeling one way or the other among most members. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm inclined to go with counsel to my left here. The recommendation and you know, and maybe, maybe another way to do this is to hold off on this. No, you want to do it now?
From a timing perspective, I don't think we can.
Oh, okay.
So I will say though, that you're approving it for first reading tonight. It will come back for second reading and final approval next week. And so if there's a desire among the board for some additional conversation, I know again, that Bonnie does serve on that committee, wasn't able to be present at that meeting. It may be fruitful to have some follow up conversation with that, that team member to understand those two minor adjustments that were made. And again, I, I think, I think the entire policy is reflective of what ISB and press, the board's policy service is recommending. And there are times where slight adjustments are useful or important. And, and there are times when they're not. So you know, I'm not, I think ultimately this is, this is a place where the board really does get to weigh in on how you'd like this policy to read. So thank you.
I have a question because I can, I wasn't at the meeting, but I can sort of understand what the person might have been thinking with the visible or unseen concern, wanting to add that. I don't know what's typical in language around it. Is it assumed in policy that when you say physical or mental disability, that that is visible or unseen? Because to me it is important that it includes both. But is that already implied?
Implicit in that language?
Right. I, I want to know, you know, I want to know what is in the industry, what, what does that include? Do we need to explicitly state that or not?
I mean, I don't, I mean, I'm a like, I work for the Human Rights Commission and we have this similar language in terms of what is, what you can discriminate against.
Yeah.
And we don't have that.
Because it is implied that it is. Amy, to, maybe this helps, these are protected classes specifically spelled out in many policies.
Right.
And they're almost identical. Without that.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. That's helpful. So then I wouldn't, I don't feel strongly, but I don't feel needed. Frank and then Erin.
Okay. Not being a lawyer, I'm not going to try and be too lawyer realistic about this. But in general, when I've worked with lawyers and documents like this, when, when there's a, a very, very long enumerated list, it, it tends to imply that other things are either not important or less important. So a little bit back to what, what Bonnie was saying in a better way. The more explicit we get, the more it kind of excludes other things. So just as a general rule, you know, I, I have a, I always worry about that because you know, it's like you identify literally, you know, 17, 18, 20 things. And then there's the, or anything else. And that kind of loses something if you happen to not be on this list. The, the list also is a list of things that kids get bullied on. It's not a list of discriminatory practices. So I think there are things that kids get bullied on that are more than just what, what would normally fall into the category of discrimination. And in particular, what I remember back, and I don't remember the exact detail, but I know there was a survey, maybe it was a year ago, maybe two or three in time supplies, especially with the COVID vacuum of what were the, what did people survey? What did they feel like they were getting the most bullied on in senior high? And I think it was, I don't remember Kelly, if you remember. What that survey was or which group? But there was a group of who, what are the most likely ways that you could be bullied? Or how do you feel you've been bullied? And I don't know if all those things were enumerated here. And again, I don't remember exactly, but it seemed like the second or third one, because we talked about it, was basically political discussions. And that there was a feeling, at least from the kids, that that was one of the things that they got bullied on. So again, if we have an enumerated list of 16, 17, 18 things, and the second or third most frequent thing that was identified by the kids isn't on that list, I'm not sure what that is. So I don't remember the exact survey, but I do remember we had a discussion about it because it was like, it surprised us. So I think there needs to be at least some thought or discussion on tying those concepts together. This isn't a list of discriminatory things. This is a list of things that kids get bullied on. Or it shouldn't be a really long enumerated list. It should be more high level, you can't discriminate no matter what.
I agree with Bonnie. I will say I don't really have an opinion about the critical versus important, except to say that if we have other goals that we say are important, are we saying this one is more important than those other important goals? So I would like the language to be the same. And as far as the visible or unseen, we don't have any qualifiers for any of the other protected classes listed. I think the opening clause of bullying on the basis of actual or perceived applies to every single protected class and covers what we're trying to cover. So I would be in favor of taking out visible or unseen.
Thank you, Erin. I was going to point out the same, looking at it more closely now. I think actually that, that phrasing comes up twice, actual or perceived in the first sentence and in the second to last line of the same paragraph with one or more of the aforementioned actual or perceived characteristics. So I wonder if the member who was providing that feedback, just pointing that out and acknowledging its actual or perceived language that is already included, probably accounts for what that individual was attempting to get at, which is whether it's actual or perceived disability. So I, I think, thank you, Erin, for pointing that out.
Although it might, that's a sort of a different thing, right? Because it's, they're both actual if you're, if it's seen or unseen. So the, the member might make that difference, right? But it's either way, it seems like it, it might not be necessary or consistent with other practices. But I would want to say if we do vote to change those things, I want to make sure we have a good process in place to get back to that committee and make sure they, you know, we heard they're in good and explain our thinking about why we might go back. For bringing them to the meeting.
Okay, so thank you for that feedback. So will Kristin or Bonnie, will one of the two of you get back to that member to follow up on this discussion? And from the board's perspective then, you will approve this policy for first reading today. And it sounds like you are recommending the, the revisions back to what was originally reviewed by the committee, which would be removal of the parenthetical visual, visible or unseen phrase. And based on Erin's comment, a change back to important instead of critical just to align with the similar language in other areas.
Yeah, I think I said I don't have an opinion when I talked to who I actually do.
Thanks. And then the only other feedback piece than that, that we also had was political affiliation being an additional bases from which we would include here, an additional category, so to speak. If that is something that the board wishes to revise in the policy, that would be different from what ISB is recommending and different from those protected classes of civil rights.
That's, that would be my question. The liberty or the, you know, is this consistent language with other policies that we have?
And I saw you hinted in a, just a question from my own understanding. I guess an experience that we had in our neighborhood is someone, someone was on the bus and getting consistently what the parent was describing as bully. The child was being called fat and being teased for being overweight. And so when I read through this, I just think there's so many things that could come up. And being overweight is not necessarily a physical disability. I'm, I'm surprised that it's such a defined list when we just don't know on any given day how, how someone can have them, someone else or cause them to have a detrimental effect on their. So I'm just bringing that up because again, it's just a one experience that I've had. So is that not bullying?
And it goes to Frank's point two.
The longer the enumerated list, the more it kind of assumes the things that aren't on there are important.
Or aren't bullying. Well, can I just say that in that, in that second paragraph, it ends for any other distinguishing characteristic? So I think that that's not catchall because all of the other like enumerated, you know, items are kind of, at this point almost all of them, like those are the ones that, you know, people most like to think of. Some things we call characteristics. That makes sense to me as well.
I guess I would like, we had at least one survey, maybe multiple, I don't remember if it was multiple, of what kids felt they were getting bullied on that reflects those things. I mean, I don't know if, you know, if kids say I've been, you know, they've, they've been bullied and then the prior credo is, you know, four or five things and only one or two of those are on this list, then is it reflecting what our kids are seeing? Or, so I, I mean, some, given that. Or, so I, I, I mean, some, given that we do have some data like that, just to make sure that it's not like ignored or not towards diminished.
I'm trying to recall which survey you're thinking of, and Kelly Jackson, I see, is raising her hand. She may have the background on that, um, or some insight about it.
I, I don't know the specific survey, I can't remember. I do know, I remember what you're talking about, Frank, but I don't remember the specific survey. But I did want to point out that in this policy, it is an exhaust, it is not an exhaustive list. And I think, thinking about those other characteristics, really what we do is we look at the next section where it says, directed toward a student or students that can be reasonably predicted to have the effect of one or more of the following. So regardless what the action is about, whether it's weight, or whether it's political viewpoint, or whether it's a physical disability, we really are looking at this as our threshold. So is it, can we predict that it's having an effect on a student that could harm their person or property? Can we predict that it would harm their, uh, you know, their schoolwork? That sort of thing, so it's more of that, how is this impacting the student regardless of what the initial kind of intent was about? Does that make sense? But I, I, I think as we go along, um, through a lot of the work that we do, we continue to look at what are the, kind of our pain point areas with kids and what it, what is being targeted? And, um, and we do want to be cognizant of that, whether it's through a survey or whether it's through, um, some of the work that some of our groups are doing this year, um, some of our student groups, so that we can make sure that we're preventing those from happening.
And I know policies aren't supposed to, I forget the exact orders of things, but over the constraint because then we implement the policies, so that I understand. But our, our community is, in a lot of ways, homogeneous, or. Not, not every item is as important in our community, and some items like, um, maybe weight, maybe whatever, are more important in terms of it happening more often, and we just want to make sure that we don't see whatever those are, whatever the surveys say they are, whatever our kids are actually experiencing, whatever's on that list, are not diminished by a long list of things that maybe show up as nineteen or twenty or something. So, what Kelly said was, was, was good, I just wanted to ask you, formalistic things don't necessarily always apply to this community and state why it's making the war.
Do, do board members feel comfortable moving forward with the changes that the press will mention for next week's approval? Thank you. Okay. Great, so, um, that brings us to public comments, which will be accepted in person and remotely via Zoom. Do not see any community members present, and we do not have any members via Zoom, so. Okay, we will move forward. We have our, oh, the IASB is a new business. Wondering if people want to take a break?
Wonderful, thank you.
So this seems like a good spot, or should we do, let's do our action item, then we'll take a break?
Perfect.
Um, so, we, I seek a motion to approve Board Policy seven point, colon, one eighty.
You're approving it for first reading?
First reading.
As amended, right?
As amended.
I move to approve as first reading of Board Policy, uh, Board of Education Policy seven, colon, one eighty, preventing bullying and other aggressive behaviors as amended.
May I have a second?
Second.
Do you have any additional comments or discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
John, is he ready?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Frank Panzico?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes.
Amy Phelan?
Yes.
Motion carries. So before we move to old business, which, uh, has a potential feeling, we will take a brief break. We come back, break to it. Thanks so much. Great, so we can resume. Uh, and for old business, uh, we have the IASB Board Retreat scheduled for Monday, December sixth at seven o'clock. Thank you.
Just a reminder, we've got that scheduled, wanted to make sure everyone, uh, has it on their calendar. Thank you for making time to join us.
Right, and we, yeah, we had referenced that earlier in the meeting.
Yep.
And under new business, we have, um, another topic about the resolutions that we should review. And just to start that conversation off, the first thing we have to decide is who will represent our board in terms of the resolutions? Typically, I believe it has been the IASB rep, if that person is attending the conference. So, if that works for you, Ms. Kim, that would be great. And then.
I'm just curious, who's, who's going to the?
Tentatively. So then I will turn it over to you to facilitate the conversation for the resolutions.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so we can go through these really quickly. I'm, if you, if you see that, I think it's the second page where there's a sort of like a checklist. I'm not quite sure why it's not in numerical, or why, why do, um, why the order has changed, but it might be easier to just go through it, um, you know, with number one being the first thing to be talked about. But, um, and we can go through these, like, because I know we talked about this as the last meeting, we can go through these pretty quickly, and and really, if there's no, I mean, if we're all, um, in agreement with how the, um, the committee has, um, you know, whether the committee has adopted or chosen not to adopt, whatever the resolution is, if we agree with the committee, the IASB committee, um, then we don't really have to talk about it. So maybe you can speak up if you disagree. Um, so looking at number one, number one is the pre-service teacher education licensure. Resolutions can be, um, recommended to adopt.
There, there's some history on this one. Yeah. Were you gonna say something?
Yeah, I was gonna say something, but I don't remember the history, sorry.
Um, I, I guess the filter that I use for all these, which, um, from a board standpoint, I'm, I'm not sure what our current board position is. There are, you know, three, four, or five years ago, we had a history of like ten years that the board didn't actually proactively take steps on this, and, and two, three years ago, we decided as a board, obviously every board changes two years, but we decided as a board that it would be appropriate to, to spend more time looking at these. The, the question that I always have is, there are some of these that, that either directly or at least indirectly impact our school district, and there are some of these that really have no impact on our school district. And the question I have is, on the ones that have no direct or, or realistic indirect impact on our district, is it really our role to take a position on? And understanding that will address, you know, what positions on each one of the ones that come after. But if our position is, we want to take a position even though it doesn't directly or indirectly impact us, then there's discussion on many of these. If it's, you know, there's a recommendation that doesn't directly impact us, let's move on, that's a different level discussion.
Your recommendation would be that we either vote to adopt or not adopt, or to just not take a stand at all, for each item. It's like one of three items, one of three options. We accept their recommendation, we don't accept their recommendation, or we don't.
That's, that's fine.
Am I hearing you correctly?
It, some of, some of them, it would be easy, we'd have no discussion because it doesn't impact us. But in the past, we've had discussion on those because we wanted to take a, or
Right.
subsets of the board wanted to take a stand. And then we have to have discussion on even the ones that don't directly impact us. So, which, which direction does the board want to go, is I guess the first question I have. And then that determines whether we spend time on some versus others.
I can already tell you there's one that I disagree with them on that I think wouldn't impact us, so. That I think we should take a stand on, but when we get to it, we can talk about it.
Something.
Yeah, let's see, let's see how we proceed.
So starting with number one, the question is, do the board members agree to adopt?
So, so this would then fall into that category that makes it more complicated, hoping that we wouldn't have to do that, but it's, this one doesn't directly impact or really indirectly impact our district. We do these things, or, or I assume we do these things, or we.
No, this is for teacher training.
Right.
This definitely.
No, no, but, but this says mandatory versus, as best practices, we do this, right?
No, this is about teacher training programs and making it a requirement that a teacher training program in these areas include at least one course.
Like in a master's program, not in our board education program. It definitely has impact to us. Last year we discussed this because there was concern that it added, uh, it was onerous for teacher training programs, but I think they've added a lot more research and information. I, I was in opposition of this last year, I, I am now definitely believe it. Same.
Okay, I mean, I remember the last year's discussion, and I didn't see the nuance that, that it mitigated that, but you understand this one better.
There has been a lot of information out about this one, about what's required. I actually work with teacher training institutes, I, I feel like it is inappropriate, probably important resolution.
Because last year, the, the issue was, you know, for our district, we could require that, but for other districts, it may be, uh.
Doesn't work that way, because it's just wherever your, wherever their training is from.
All right. Then, then I step back.
Okay, so it looks like everybody's in agreement to adopt this, or to, um, support it?
Or the committee's recommendation.
Okay, so moving on to number two, number two is, um, student safety and protection law. So, this is, um, that the IASB would support, um, legislation that would allow voluntary disabilities at any capacity, he's willing to carry concealed firearm on just. And, uh, the committee is recommending to adopt that resolution. I, I have concerns about this resolution. Um, if, I think, yeah.
Would not be my comfort to, or to support, to actively support adopting this. Because as I read it, um, it is not about trained security officers. It's allowing any trained staff to work for that. I'd have a hard time getting behind, um, actively.
I would go further to say that I think we should oppose it. You know, Mark Steen said when we talked about this, he would, whether it was last year or two years ago, he said something very sage, which was about that he thought the only person in a school who should have a gun attached to them is someone whose sole job it is and whose training provides for the maintenance and, um, proper use of that gun. And I think, you know, I'm assuming a lot of us have seen stories about a teacher who had a gun and put it on the shelf in the bathroom to use the bathroom and then left and forgot it and all, it's just, it, I don't think it's safe. And I know our district wouldn't do this, but I'm willing to, to, um, say that I don't think any district in Illinois should be doing this. I think there are other ways to protect those schools other than this, which I think is potentially very harmful to kids.
I could oppose this law.
I oppose this law. I, I do, I will say, I have great empathy for this situation. I think it, it is not a problem we face, but this feels like an unseen solution.
Yeah, not a fan of this one.
Now to number three. Um, this one is, um, supporting legislation that provides for compensation for school board members. The, the, not, not adopt. Committee's, um, stance on that.
I agree.
Much in support of that?
Do not adopt. Part of the recommendations is to not adopt. There's a lot of negative in that.
Um, and number four is, um, a, um, resolution that would allow for board members to be reimbursed for childcare costs, um, to participate in school board meetings, and that the committee recommends to adopt that.
I, I didn't understand, one, the, the, these two are relatively overlapping. And the second is, I, I think it's a slippery slope to start having a, having some things that are compensated and some things aren't, that, um, that gets complicated and, and over time gets even more complicated, so, I'm, I have concerns with this one. I'm not sure I understand why any compensation is a good idea for a, uh, elected, um, voluntary board.
Me, what was compelling was wanting to make the role accessible to anybody in the community who might be an affected board member, but might be prohibited. Yeah, and then when you're talking about school boards, often you're talking about people with children, and I would, this to me seems like a good solution to the previous one, where I don't support just being paid, but if that allows certain community members to run, it seems like a reasonable inclusion. I supported this one as well.
Neither.
There's a compensation issue that, um, who would, who would compensate? I mean, in here, it does mention, um, that basically your, um, campaign funds could be used for this, I think. But is this, would this be something that then would be paid for by the school district, as it's written here? Or, or through other funds? And related.
Understanding was that it would be the school district that it might be able to do that.
I mean, it kind of references the other thing, but it doesn't, so it gets, it's a little bit ambiguous, um, at least in my understanding of, of this document. So that would be one question that I would have, is the nuance, at least. And then the, the second one is, from a school district standpoint, um, I assume that if someone had a just claim, to use, lack of a better, you know, had a, had a defense report, it would be handed in to to carry, and then she would have to approve it, or, I mean, there is, you know, when, what the definition of things that are approved and not approved, um, you know, the rate that's approved, I mean, there's a lot of, like I said, this opens up a door for a lot of complexity, which, you know, maybe it's, the value is there, but there is complexity, and it's, you know, there's gonna have to be expense reports, there's gonna have to be check proved, you know, is it a babysitter that, um, or the, the girl boy down the street? Or is it a, you know, paid professional? Or is it a, you know, paid professional that two or three times the rate? You know, is it, or, I mean, there's just a lot of nuance. And how is that going to be monitored or is it part of why I, I think this maybe isn't complete?
Me, the value of making the board member open to a broader socioeconomic spectrum would be worth figuring out. I don't know. I, I support that.
I mean, I, I agree conceptually and how it's laid out, but it, it's compelling that I'm going to put my cynical hat on and say, you know what, people who can otherwise afford this are going to capture most of the benefit anyway. So call me cynical, you know, but, but if, if you put this kind of benefit out there, like what, what is the knee jerk going to be? Oh, we're going to cover, you know, childcare for everyone on every board in all of Illinois. Here's another unfunded mandate.
I can see both sides. But ultimately, I come down with what you said.
Out in the legislature, you know, so at this point, like looking at this proposal, I'm not.
I think it needs more work personally.
I mean, these don't have to be unanimous.
Yeah.
Oh, right.
Yeah, not at all.
I would say it's premature, so I'd say no.
I support the premise. I feel like it needs more work. I feel like there needs to be more controls in there.
I appreciate that and I will, I mean, I will bring these things up at the meeting.
But I think, I think we do have to, I think you're going to have to stand in the yes column or a no column or nowhere at all. So it seems like it would be the no.
I think it's a no.
Gani, just so that you understand, I, if you haven't attended before, I think you have the opportunity to voice your rationale or the board's rationale for whichever area you're standing in or whichever side you're voting. So taking notes on board members' thoughts now will help to support your participation at that meeting.
Okay, so based on our discussion, at this point, we're going to pose on resolution number four. Moving on to number five, this is fabulous. This is first I've concerned. So what do you people think? That we support, okay, support?
That's the title.
Yeah, right?
What a good idea.
Okay, so moving along to number six, reorganizing the board, taking the board 40 days rather than 28 days. Regime change. Support?
So. Um. We always. And again, this is the history of what we do. We, we always set our April meeting to be after this so that we can reorganize the board at that meeting. Forty days would make that our hope for us. So I don't know. The reason we did 28 was to make sure that there's no chance that there's any appeals or anything that could change the outcome. If it changed to 40 as the, the not to exceed date, it would seem to me that we would have to say, well, we wouldn't be guaranteed that the outcome is done until 40 days. Which case.
Wouldn't have to change that.
Says within 40 days.
Well, yeah, but it says within 28 days now. And 28 days is to make sure we avoid any chance that there's appeal or some other election process stuff that, that might change the outcome. If it's 40 days, I'd assume that that same level of caution would then be, we'd have to wait 40 days to be guaranteed that the election has then been certified and that there is no chance that there be some kind of fallout or, or whatever. If that's the case, 40 days is an awfully long time. And they particularly even mentioned the lame duck problem. I'm not saying that, that the district would have that, but you have to, you know, take the general case and certainly even the general case for our district. But 40 days of knowing that you're going to get, you know, one, two, four members, but they're not on the board and then the people that maybe are no longer on the board just lose interest. I mean, there's, that's a, 40 days is an awfully long time period. So I, I'm concerned what that means. And waiting for the election to be certified or something ahead, even though officially it hasn't been certified. It seems to me that if the election's not fully certified, it's 40 days. I mean, I, I defer to the administration on this. Do you, do you need, do we need more time?
I don't know that we've had the experience that we need more time, but there must be some locations where additional time could be beneficial. So I.
And it doesn't affect us, right? But it might help out districts that need that much.
Well. Could, could we have some understanding of, even though it's 40 days, that we would not be restricted in any way from doing it after 28?
Keep our current.
And my concern there is if it's 40 days in general for the state, then the way ballots are counted, et cetera, audited and all those things will grow to 40 days. And, you know, will we be the exception that, you know, we'll not go to the goal that we finish in 22? Or will, will we grow to 40? And if it grows to 40 days, is that something that's good for our district? I don't think it is. That's just a question of, does it mean that it'll grow to 40 days? It's my question.
I think as a, as a district, as a board, you're beholden to the certification of the election commission. So I'm not sure how this would play out if it then extends the election commission's timeline for certifying those, those ballots. I can't predict that at this point.
But I have concerns that, that once this door is opened, it'll end up being 40 days to be conservative or to be careful and 40 days is an awfully long time.
I read it differently, so now I just keep reading it. I, my understanding was that our process would stay the same, but that it would give districts who are struggling to reorganize extra time. And I'm still not sure if that's, I'm not sure what you're saying.
Yeah, that does make sense. I mean, I think there's still a bunch of districts that don't have happy days.
That's what they're saying.
So.
Well, I, I mean, I do think just.
This says they have to certify within 21 days. I don't think they're recommending that that can change.
Yes, thank you.
I think we could support it and not change our plan.
In the very beginning. The election code states that the election authority must canvass the vote within 21 days after the election. So they're not recommending that that change.
If, if that's clear, then I.
So it sounds like. Support that.
Get a chance to comment on it, if it's dependent on that 21 day.
That's not. So, okay, so moving on to number seven, this is supporting legislation to include the study of Native American and Indigenous people for social studies content and U.S. history. The committee recommends adopting this resolution.
Did we give a quick thumbs up or some doubt? No, we should discuss or not?
And you're not sure about?
Oh, sorry, I didn't see that. Okay, great.
Can I clarify? We already do this, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When it looks like it doesn't mandate as much as it's encouraged, so if the district is doing best practices, it doesn't change.
Saying that you don't think it can be?
I think everybody was in support.
Violent agreement.
Okay, so looking at number eight. The committee recommends not to adopt this resolution that all elementary schools need to sign for reading, which is like a emphasis on phonetics, is that right?
Yeah.
Phonics. Um, do you have a feeling on that?
Uh, I would go with no.
You agree with them?
Oh, yeah, I agree with them to say no.
I think if you're a thumbs up, you're agreeing with their recommendation.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry. Yes.
Um, so moving on to number nine, number nine is the inclusion of health and education. Committee recommends adopting the resolution A. Number 10 is the introducing legislation that would allocate some of the state's debt to the use of cannabis sales to public education programs.
Why not, right?
That's property tax, please.
Okay, number 11 is sort of urging the federal government to provide funding for school districts for clean energy infrastructure. So the committee is recommending not to adopt. And Erin, you said we should adopt this?
Yes.
Okay.
Why wouldn't we urge Congress to do this? Not mandatory, we're just urging Congress to do it. Good thing.
You're urging Congress to provide federal funding?
Yep.
Wonder why they said no. They want the school districts to stay in their lane.
You look under the resolution committee rationale, it offers some insight into why they're recommending to not adopt.
Version sounds like they're concerned if there's a thick pot that the mandate could move money from other programs to this program opposed to encouraging adding to the pot.
That's legitimate. I want a bigger pot.
I do.
I want a bigger pot.
Do you want a bigger pot?
I know, me too. I want a bigger pot.
Erin Stone for Congress. Come on.
So number 11, the board is supporting their recommendation.
Okay, so for number 12, we have urging the federal government to provide funding for school districts for clean electric school buses and charging stations. Again, the resolutions committee is recommending not to adopt. Because why was it limited to only electric buses and not other types of renewable fuel? Oh, sorry. Got lots of potential.
As long as those buses are made in Illinois.
Landscaping, federal funding. Urging Congress to provide funding to school districts for landscaping. So. And this one was recommendations to adopt. So I see a couple of people saying yes. People not having much of an opinion.
I don't have a, I don't understand.
Yeah, I'm so ready to say. Landscaping.
As long as you do. I, I didn't understand on this one why this is something, I mean, there's other ones that we said. Six budgets and mandating things, this one. They don't even spend time with the rationale on, but.
Yeah, if I can, I mean, I just don't like the idea of the federal government anywhere near this. So even in landscaping. It's just me.
Okay.
So where, I don't know where we are.
We're on landscaping.
I know, I mean, I don't know where we.
Federal government needs to pay for landscaping.
I think it's about addressing issues like flooding and helping schools manage water. So to me, to me, that.
That's how I, I sort of read it. I, it looked a little more wrong than that.
Right.
If it was, um, flooding, water damage, but it seems like it came to rain gardens, monterey gardens, tree and perennial plants.
With root structures to help soil. So I, I, it is, I think it is.
Oh, bike paths and sidewalks. I mean, it's, it's another one of these that at the level of sphere is not very precise.
Yeah. Okay, so we have heard people who are opposed, so we're going to go with that. So number 14, resolution to support the expansion of broadband, you don't know. 15, supporting legislation which strengthens child safe gun storage laws. Talk on this, Erin? The resolutions committee recommends not to adopt this.
I don't know what we do that's more important than keeping our students and staff safe. And if 4.6 million minors live in homes with, or with loaded unlocked firearms, but they're saying, well, it's not our place to do anything about this. I totally disagree with this.
Frank, do you have something to say?
Well, I mean, their committee, I mean, their rationale reflects it, but, but I think it's also 17 and 18 year olds in our community are still basically children. 17 year, 18 year olds in, in other communities are more adults, younger adults. And I think there's an issue here of, you know, where is that line in terms of a mandate? So that, that would be.
What do you mean about a mandate? I think this is about advocacy for education.
Yeah, but, but.
To store gun batteries.
Yeah, but, yeah, and, and there already was that for 14, if you had a 14 year old. But this is saying if you had a, you know, an 18 year old or 17 year old in, in, you're living.
This doesn't apply to 18 year olds. This is.
17.
Right.
But it was before it was 14. And, and my, my point is 14, I completely understand. But when you get to 17 year olds and you get into communities where, you know, they're.
Wouldn't you, so everything I've read is that safe gun storage is essential for safety, no matter whether it's an adult, a 44 year old or a 16 year old. So this is about, it, about safety education, right, for gun storage? Am I understanding that correctly?
It's mandating, it's not education. You could get in trouble if you don't do it.
I would, I would, I believe that safe gun storage for anyone is essential for the safety of children. Everything I've read is that that's almost what the single most important safety measure in families has. Is that gun owners store them safely, regardless of how old the gun owner is. So I would, I, I agree with Erin.
I do as well.
I would not.
I would not, I, I would do the thumbs down.
Thumbs down, okay.
So, just to be clear, you are opposing their recommendation, which means you support the resolution, essentially, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Oh, I don't know where we are, we're on number sixteen.
Oh, no, I support, yeah.
Yeah, black them out.
Wait, you support which? Their recommendation?
I, I do not, I support with the group.
Okay.
So I think as a, as a group, we're agreeing that we are going to oppose the, oppose the resolution committee's recommendation. And Frank, I did hear you, I do know that you're-
That's fine, that's fine.
Um, okay, so moving on to number sixteen, um, this is a resolution that, um, ISB, I E S B would lobby ISBE to complete an in-depth review of the school code. And the committee is like, we don't have time for that.
I didn't understand this one, I have a good question for it, but I don't know. Somebody understands it better than me.
I don't know, I have a opinion. I don't think I, I may not understand the, but I mean, it's an awfully long and complicated care, so, uh, but, but then again, who would be reviewing that? So, would they review it to make it less complicated? It works straight forward. I have my doubts. I mean, inclined to go with the committee resolution on the-
Frank, that, that's-
Curious what Carrie thinks, but I won't, I won't ask.
I'm similar to you, I would just be inclined to go with the committee recommendation on this one. I don't think that there's enough information to help me decide otherwise.
Perfect world, it would be wonderful.
The law giver needs to comment this at all.
Um, okay, so moving on to number seventeen. Going on?
This is a new category now, these are not new ones, these are already things.
Amending the constitution.
Yeah, so I don't know that we have to weigh in on, actually.
Well.
She, she would still have the opportunity to go back.
The bar is just a little bit different, I mean, this is, is this a good idea or not?
Yeah.
This is, these have already been picked as ideas, and do we want to redrags those look at?
To be clear, seventeen, though, you are amending what was already written.
Yeah.
As opposed to the others where, you're right, Frank, you're affirming it.
So it's, this is the constitution. They're using the word equitably. Why don't they just use the words just and fair? Why don't they just balance the budget of Illinois to distribute the money, you know, as they should? Just saying.
I, I was in support of this.
Oh, I would, I just get annoyed.
You know?
Well, it's, it's, you know, it's, is Illinois still fiftieth of fifty states in state funding for education?
Well, the good news is the goal is-
I believe it is, yeah, so.
Funds of fifty percent, and, oh, I believe we're off by about a factor of ten on that.
What's that, Frank?
I think the state goal is that the state would buy fifty percent of the funding to school districts, and our particular district right now is off by a factor of ten on that. Whatever.
We're worried about our district. Yeah.
Um, so then, so then the next four, um, resolutions have to do with reaffirming opposition, so, and first three, we can look at together, I think. Um, they're all about charter schools, I don't really have much of an opinion, it just says, why not?
This, was this-
They made sense to me, and I, I was in support when I read through them in terms of what they were.
I think you know more than me, like, is it-
Don't know a lot about charter schools.
But is it, is it that, I remember the issues being basically there were some districts where the school board didn't have any control at all-
Correct.
Over what was going on, and then Izzy wanted to get some control. For the school boards, yeah.
Yes. They did in, like, twenty nineteen, so, and reaffirm, and that-
That was a good summary, John.
Yeah. Okay, so are we sort of in agreement that, like, what's not to support here? And then for number twenty-one, uh, number twenty-two, this is the new voting statement, uh, which I E S B would urge school districts to consider adopting a policy encouraging students to complete assignment. As opposed to just taking a zero, like, just saying, even if you're late, you can, like, it's good for you to do your work. Go check out. Um, and then number twenty-three is a a resolution that the overall physical and mental health is of fine importance. You gonna disagree? Okay. Okay, great. There's no further discussion on that, I think we're done, we have to go.
Thank you for being our representative of that.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Do we have any other new business?
Okay, seeing none, we may, we need a motion to adjourn the special meeting committee of the whole.
I move to adjourn the special meeting, the committee of the whole.
May I have a second?
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Johnson's already?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Frank Panzika?
Yeah.
Erin Stone?
Yes.
Amy Pele?
Yes. Motion carries, and the time is eleven oh six AM.